This is a workshop for the matter of the record. And it's in regards to our Unified Development Ordinance. We have been talking for some time about the UDO. And this is part of the process that we will engage in as a council, which will obviously continue all the way through to the passage of the ordinance and in some regards goes ahead and denotes the fact that at some point soon, we'll be having some public participation. You may be asked about that as we move forward. But certainly, our intent tonight is to start with council and to begin to sift through some of the issues that or questions that you may have as we look at sort of the first blush, I would say, of the plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our staff and the floor is yours.
Thanks. So Mayor and Council, as Mayor Daner said, so recently, we brought forward a DRD case that was about an accessory dwelling unit. As I'm sure you'll remember, it was just a month or two ago. And during that conversation, you know, we mentioned that we were going to be trying to incorporate ADUs or accessory dwelling units into the new Unified Development Ordinance and that we would be discussing it with council to kind of make sure we're going the right direction before we bring the draft forward for public and for full council input. So that's what we're looking for tonight. During that conversation, it was brought up that we may need to take a look at accessory structures in general and whether or not we need some stricter regulations. So that's kind of what we're hoping to get from you guys tonight is just some feedback. There's no decisions made tonight. We're just going to show you kind of the draft language so far and kind of confirm we're going in the right direction. And if we're not, get feedback on where you'd like us to go instead. So with that, I'll pass this over to the, our consultant, Kelly Klepper is the project manager from Kim Lee Horn. So him and then Monae Moore is joining us via Zoom on our Mondo pad tonight. So you can't see her because she's sharing her screen, but she's joining us from Florida. So Kelly, you'll be going over accessory structures and then Monae will be going over accessory dwelling units. And again, this is a workshop setting, so obviously, if you guys have questions, feel free to stop us. It's not, you know, we're wanting input from you. So if you have questions or you have feedback, we want to hear it. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it over. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn. And as Ashley said, back at the house, I have Monae Moore, who's been working tirelessly on the UDO as well. You will get to meet her when we roll out some more of the, I'll say, the bigger ticket items in the sections. And like I said, we're going to split up the presentation tonight and just kind of walk through these two kind of core topics. So I'm actually doing something off of my screen. She's going to be actually sharing on her screen. So Monae, let's go ahead and go to the first slide as far as the background and purpose is concerned. Okay, this is actually working through this as well, so I'm not touching it. Even better. So as Ashley said, you know, we're here to give you a quick update. There was the two topics that were brought up. So, you know, we wanted to kind of spearhead some of that discussion now so that you can see not only what the thinking is, but also help give us a little direction as we're moving forward. Just to kind of, the other thing, of course, is that as we are moving through this, you're going to see a lot of changes. You all brought us in, we interviewed, we've been meeting with staff, and it wasn't a simple cleanup. That was not our challenge. It was, give us something new, fresh, out of the box, and more importantly, it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. We are on a really good track for that right now, so a lot of the pieces and parts are coming together. But I will say that there's still quite a bit of work. And as the mayor said, we're going to be talking about and doing some additional stakeholder steering committee input as well as the public itself. So what are we going to be talking about tonight? So what the overview itself is, we are talking, as Ashley said, about section 4.5 of the proposed UDO, which would be accessory uses and structures. And then Monae is going to talk about section 4.5c, which is getting into the accessory dwelling units. The one thing we always like to do, of course, is on the next slide, you'll see that, you know, when we did the initial kind of rollout of the table of contents, keep going, Monae, there we go. We always want to kind of say, hey, where are we in the world from the UDO perspective? So as we've kind of laid out, the general sections that you see here are the eight sections. Where is the information that we're talking about kind of falling? Hence the reason we're showing you within section, section four. So let's talk, let's dive right into accessory uses and structures.
Before we jump in the deep end of the pool right here, how about, for those that hadn't been able to join us in any of the prior workshops or that sort of thing, just the 30,000-foot view of the bigger types of things we're going to run into with the UDO as opposed to the zoning ordinance that we've got now and why we're at this point? Just a quick, brief round of that.
Sure. Absolutely. So Monae, let's go back one slide. Actually, let's go two slides to the UDO sections. So Mayor, great question. So the one thing I'll say is, we took the current code that you have, including portions of your subdivision regulations. We are taking bits and pieces from that and we're making it into a truly a Unified Development Ordinance. New topics: Form-based code components are those design standards for mixed-use centers. Rethinking the way that you approach your zoning, both from the density standards as well as the uses. Simplification. A lot of what we're going to talk about is simplifying the code that you have now. And as Ashley and Brandon will tell you, you start to look at one portion of the code and it takes you to another portion, and that portion, you kind of get into this cycle and circular motion. So simplification. Graphics. Graphics, graphics. I think I even joked about, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. We're not only defining the topics, we're also illustrating so that it's very clear for staff, so there's not a, well, we're not sure, let us try to figure this out. The other thing is clearly identifying the uses. Updating the uses, expanding some, contracting others, because there are certain things, as we all know, are just no longer relevant. Or there's new trends that have come about that we need to make sure we're addressing for the city. So the other thing is, with respect to the design and development standards, you know, we're getting into the open space classifications. What should be counted as open space? What constitutes it? Where should that be placed? Different housing types. Certain things that are, require, I'll say, full-blown public hearings when they really shouldn't. Talking about and recommending that those be more administrative. You've got a great staff, trust them. We're not talking about mass, major subdivisions and massive amount of development going through just staff level by no means. We're talking about the smaller things that, you know, similar to like a building permit or some of the other things with some of the uses we have, allowing those to continue to move forward without a cumbersome process. The other thing I would say is, there again, a lot of cleanup. There are bits and pieces that are redundant, they leave gaps, or they conflict with each other. So, you know, you're going to see design and development standards, you're going to see parking, you're going to see updates to the uses and the tables, a different way of approaching the zoning districts, creating mixed-use districts that really reflect kind of the way development is occurring these days. Whereas the town center with the commercial, the office, the multifamily, the single family, all in that unified setting. And then also updating your standards. And that's where, reason we have one of our engineers kind of looking at some of the standards right now with respect to stormwater, with grading, with slopes, and some other things. So I don't know if that was too much, not enough, Mayor?
It's fine. Because the D is what we were looking for, that's kind of.
Correct. So Monae, let's go ahead and jump forward. Keep going. So let's just start off with what is a simple definition. What is an accessory use or a structure? Now, this is where we got to be very careful, because a lot of times, people will start to interchange accessory dwelling unit with accessory use or a structure. Now, an ADU is a portion of it, but it's not the only portion. So we want to make sure that certain things that, you know, the city has identified to us that are concerning or need some additional looking, we're taking a look at. But accessory use is just what it says right there. The use of a structure or lot that does not change the character of the principal use, I want you to focus in on that word "principal" for a moment, of the property. Principal use of the property. Accessory is just that. It's subsequent to, it's part of, it's not the primary use. If it's the primary use, then guess what? That's actually a principal use. So we wanted to make sure we were addressing those things that are subordinate to the principal use. The mother-in-law suite, the, you know, I'm not going to get into home occupation, but some of, you know, some of the structures that we have, that we are seeing today with gazebos, with bathhouses, with other types of things, so certain structures. And we've got a couple of graphic images we're going to show you here in just a second. So there again, it's not that dwelling unit, it's a part, the dwelling unit is a portion of it. The structure and the use itself is the overarching umbrella. So let's go ahead and keep going, but just keep in mind there again, principal structure and what we're talking about is intended to complement the principle. It needs to be there, it needs to support, it needs to enhance, it needs to be a part of. It cannot be, or should not be, a, I'll say, literally, we'll say, a specific use that in otherwise would be on an individual lot or someplace else on a larger scale. Small scale, designed, location, those types of factors. So what are we talking about when we say accessory use and/or a structure? You can see the list here. And we've actually gone through the current code. We've also looked at some best planning practices. We've looked at some of the other communities and said, okay, what are other people doing as well? So we get into identifying, you know, carports, we get into garages, outdoor storage facilities, sheds, the outdoor recreational features, and those are the pools, gazebos, the bathhouses, and things of that nature. And then you start looking down this list and you see drive-through facility, outdoor seating, bicycle parking. You may go, okay, Kelly, that is not a structure. And it's correct. That's a use. So that's the reason we've kind of, we start looking at some of the delocational standards and what those items should be. All the way through to the very last one, which is something that Monae is going to work on and talk about, which is the ADU, which is a secondary dwelling unit. There again, secondary. That is a big focus of what we're talking about. So when we start thinking about, on the next slide, you know, what are we really kind of diving into? Well, accessory uses are allowed by right in certain areas. You know, right now, it either is a DRD, which I know is, can be a little troublesome or it can be a little ambiguous at times. You know, certain things should be able to be done by right, as if you were building an addition onto your house or a garage or anything like that, as long as it's still within the parameters of the lot, the setbacks, the height, or whatever else. Why not let it move forward? It's, you know, there again, it's got to be located on the same lot. You can't have an accessory structure on a separate lot, because at that point, it becomes principal. Individual lot with an individual use, you start going into that route. The other thing that we started saying was, well, what should we be looking at from a locational standpoint? An accessory structure should be to the side or to the rear. It should not be in the front yard. And you may go, well, what's the big deal? We're working with a community right now where an accessory structure is defined as a swimming pool, and the city failed to identify the location for which an accessory structure could be placed. The pool's in the front yard. Not that I would personally do that, but you've got the front yard, you've got the swimming pool, you've got everything going on, and the house sits in the back. Do you really want that as the vista that you have coming in? Imagine that coming in on point set. So we want to make sure that those structures, those uses are off to the side or off to the rear. And there again, we've already talked about, shall only be allowed where the principal use is existing. Now, Ashley's going to remind me, there's a couple of things that we're going to start asking some general questions, it's time to, you know, trying to get some additional dialogue and some head nods. But, you know, the other thing that we wanted to make sure and talk about, we don't have it on the slide here, is, you know, we're not saying that a building or a structure can be located right on the property line. To the contrary, we're saying it can't be within the setback, or if it is, it meets certain standards. It can't be within a utility or drain adjustment. There again, if it is, there's certain things that you have to do with that. We're also going to be talking to you a little bit about, you know, what is the preference of this council as far as what the building or the use looks like? Should it match? Should it be identical? Should it have the same features? You know, so we start asking some of those. And then, of course, we also start thinking about, what is the maximum height? I know that Brandon and Ashley were saying that you've got a one right now that without a maximum limit for an accessory structure called out, you could actually have a storage facility or a storage unit that goes 60 feet up in the air and the house itself is only 35 feet. Or you could, you know, so that, or you could have other standards that aren't getting applied here. So we're trying to close some of those gaps, so there's that level of certainty. So, you know, part of that is also asking the question, what is council comfortable with?
Go to the next slide.
Yep. Go ahead, Monae, go to the next one. There we go. So there again, you know, right now, we're talking about both residential and non-residential. We've identified a few potential development standards with respect to setbacks and height. But then we start asking, you know, there again, the question, are you okay with or prefer that a limit on height be provided for accessory structure? Similar to either the house or the unit that's there now, or the district itself? And that's kind of a general, I'm seeing a couple of head nods of, okay. Yeah, absolutely.
And we spoke before the meeting, and Mike, well, I've got another, let me go back to the side yard, rear yard, front yard. Is there, would there be an exception or a process if someone, and I really can't think of a place in the city now, but let's say it was an estate-type setting, where your home did sit at the back of the property? And as you came in, there would be an accessory structure, like a large fountain? Would that, would a fountain?
Fountain would not be.
Would not.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely not fall into play here. And I was sharing with Ashley and Brandon, we're actually, we're doing a code review for Bellmead, Tennessee, which is a suburb of Nashville. They actually regulate the placement of ornamental fountains. They also regulate, believe it or not, dog houses greater than 250 square feet. I don't know about you all, but if you've got a doghouse that's 250 square feet, you've got.
I can thank you for something else that didn't specially build. But what about, you mentioned a gazebo. And I could see in my mind that if you had your property set up properly, that a gazebo would fit beyond those parameters you just described. Is there a process that you can go through?
Correct. The majority of what I'm going to tell you, nothing is absolute. There is going to be a process set up, but, you know, there's going to be standards, you know, because when I grew up, you know, it was the house on the hill, there was the pond at the bottom of the hill, and we all went fishing off the dock in the gazebo. And that would kind of be regulated at that point. There again, we're going to try to accommodate or regulate and define the vast majority of uses and things. We, we're not going to get 100%. So long way of saying, yes, there will be, and there needs to be.
The other item that you and I spoke briefly about, and I liked when you started, you talked about form-based zoning and you're going to have pictures and diagrams and so on and so forth. I know we're talking here about height, and you said there were some people nodding their heads. I am assuming that, in my mind, what I would like to see out of all of this is, in the example I gave you, over off Roper Mountain, there is a subdivision that the homes probably are a million dollars or plus. It has an accessory structure, I guess you would call that, but it is the blacksmith shop that you would find in Colonial Williamsburg. Huge. But now, it fits. It looks like part of the home, but it's, you know, it's twice the size of my home. So when it's all said and done, if someone wanted to do something like that, we would have not only the language, but we would have pictures and things like that.
Those, probably not so much. The buildings and the architectural design we're talking about in the mixed use, definitely. This one's going to be a little bit more nebulous. And you're actually reading ahead on the next two bullets that we have right here, which, you know, those are some of the other questions that we're asking about. You know, where does this council fall with, with respect to, you know, an accessory structure? Are you good with it not looking like the, the main structure incorporating elements of it? Is there any sort of height limitations or other considerations? Now, I will say, be the first one to say, we also talked about this earlier. We're not talking about the utility shed that you can go to Home Depot or Lowe's and put on your lot. Those things that are not currently regulated, but regulated through the building permit process would still be in that. What we're talking about are those items that trigger that certain additional level. So, yeah, the question becomes, do you, do you want to see those structures have at least a similar type of architectural feel, flavor, and all of that, especially, we'll say, if it's fronting or, you know, visible from a public right-of-way? Or is it like, we really don't care?
Jay, I think to your point, we, you know, just did first blush on this thing. I think it would be easier to have a appeal process that would ask to go bigger or different than something that had to have.
Exactly.
Because otherwise, we're going to wind up in a situation like we've got downtown, where we've got somebody that's got a, literally, a two-story building in their backyard, 60 by 30 or something. You know, and even though it sits below the house because the lot's sloped, if that building were behind that house on that lot, you would essentially have two houses. It's like your accessory building might be bigger than that.
Right, right. No, I, I think is, when all this is said and done, if there's parameters and then there is the ability for somebody to go in and appeal, I think that's good. I just don't want us to take one set of regulations and swap them for another set and we've got the same thing.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, and we actually had that conversation before today. We, we don't have the answer yet, but we had the same conversation about, you know, for the most part, we don't think accessory structures should be larger than the primary structure. But then you have estate lots with a farmhouse and a stable, and that stable being much bigger makes sense. So we, we don't have the answer quite yet, but that is certainly, when you bring that up, I think that's a very valid point, and we need to address it somehow, so.
Is there any way to tie that to either the size of the lot or to the area?
Yeah. We talked about, like Brandon had the idea of it only being allowed on parcels that are larger than two acres. Or, like you said, the zoning, those lots are typically going to be, I think it's, our new zoning district is called rural residential. So maybe those would be allowed in those by special exception, and then we could kind of take a look and make sure that it, that it is kind of fitting. So, again, I don't have the answer, but that's definitely something we're taking note of. And I'm glad you brought it up, so.
That seems pretty obvious, because if you've got three or five acres, you've got a large house on it, but you want to do a barn on, you know, at the end of a long driveway out, that's not an issue for me particularly.
Exactly. And you mentioned, the, the big thing about somebody being able to come and appeal the decision, that's big too, because they may have a design using different materials that's not prominent in that neighborhood or that street, but it may look good, so.
Absolutely.
Same, same thing with the, are you talking about the additional building?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so much excited about making it look like the primary building. It just needs to be a, a good-looking structure that doesn't detract, let's put it that way.
No, it's same thing with our nuisance and abatement ordinances. The overall theme is, we just want it to look good.
Yeah.
So make that happen, y'all do.
Okay. That works.
And it may be, it would be real difficult. If you've got a nice brick home, if you want a four-car garage behind it, that'd be pretty expensive to build a brick garage.
Well, and to your point, one of the things that we have, have designed and put into place previously is, it doesn't have to be a mirror image of the, the house, but it has to have, we'll say, the same elements. So, you know, the same colorations, or there again, if you can see it from the road, that, that face has to be brick. If it's in the back where nobody's going to see it except them, who cares? So that's, that's one of the things we're kind of looking and thinking about.
The only thing I have to say is, I'm very invested on how this topic turns out, because what Jay is explaining is exactly how my house is set up. I got a long driveway, sits on a hill, and at some point, I do want to build an accessory, something, possibly like a carriage house or something. So the direction this goes is going to affect me, so curious.
Yeah, and I will say, and, yeah, and Ruthie can correct me if I'm wrong, other than life safety, you know, there's, there really does need to be some out. There again, we can't, we can't create a code that's going to cover everything and it's so arduous or so horrible that you could not enjoy your property. But at the same time, there may be additional things you need to do to kind of mitigate that. You know, one of the other things, and this actually goes to a couple of the comments of, you know, what's the council's thoughts on the size of the unit? Now, a lot of places limit the size of that accessory structure or the accessory use, whatever, to, you know, no more than X percent of the existing house or a maximum square footage, just so you don't have what you were just talking about, other than the barn scenario, where you have a, you know, a 1,500-square-foot house with a 2,000-square-foot garage and outbuilding. A lot of places will say, you know, up to 33% or up to 50% of the existing house size not to exceed 750 square feet. So, you know, that's another one of those questions that we need to kind of gauge from this council of, are you concerned about its size? If so, you know, what's that kind of thought? Not necessarily saying that there's going to be such a minimum to where somebody couldn't enjoy it, but at the same time, really focused in on the maximum size of some of these.
Can I ask Ruthie a real quick question, just as a part of this conversation? If somebody brings in plans for an accessory structure, do we review it in the same fashion that we do at home in regards to where it's going to, where it's going to shed water and which direction it's going to go and all that kind of stuff? Because if you build a large garage within so many feet of the property line, you're sending water somewhere.
Yes, sir. Maybe I should do the same process for zoning setbacks, store water review, and building code review. And we also look at the separation between the primary dwelling unit and the building itself.
And the only exception to that, I think, is structures under 200 square feet, and those just go through, but those still go through zoning, they just don't go through building or stormwater.
Next, next.
What are the questions? There's really good questions, really good thoughts on that.
I would be interested to see, how would it look? Let's say, you know, you base it off of square footage and 30-whatever percent, but with an exception or something like, based on your lot size? You know, if you have more than a certain amount of acreage, you know, how could that look?
Perfect. And Monae, I know you're taking copious notes at this point, aren't you?
It's also being reported, you know.
Yeah. You can come up with for that one.
Yeah, that's, that's important to mention, though. When you start restricting things, you start creating situations that you didn't intend. I know that there is a house in a nice neighborhood within, you know, a few blocks from here that has a really large, nice garage, and it fits. When you try to rein things in by size, a lot of times, you miss that mark of it fitting.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we have to understand too, that living downtown is going to be a whole lot different than living off of, having a great 12 or 15 acres, you know? Which could happen, you know?
Yeah, and that's the other term you're going to hear us say a lot of times, it's context-sensitive. What is the context of the setting? You hit the nail on the head, Mayor. Downtown and what we're defining is the potential, or, you know, the traditional neighborhood, which would be the new zoning versus the rural residential, completely different approach on a lot of this, so.
But the same thought process.
Same thought, just a little different application. Yes, sir. But at that point, you know, you've got specific standards that, you know, if you're in this area or you're looking at that, here's your process. If you're in this area, it's this, instead of one size fits all, which we all know does not work. Any other thoughts? Let's keep going. Let's go to the next slide, Monae. So, you know, some people start asking us, well, what does, what could some of these look like? This is actually a, you know, accessory use and a structure with a principal structure. The house itself that you see on the back is physically attached to the restaurant, and that owner lives there. And I'm sitting there thinking, that's got to be a heck of a commute. How do you find parking? Or worse, do you really want to be that close to your home? But no. But, you know, they, it was, it's an older house that was converted. It's in a neighbor, it's a neighborhood setting, so there again, you've got the, the restaurant, in this case, the deli, and the owner is living on site. So the principal use in this case is the restaurant. The accessory in this is the residential dwelling. The accessory in this is the residential dwelling unit. This is just one of the examples, uh, that you could be looking at. And next, Monet? So, in the same approach that we're doing, uh, with the zoning table, uh, and you will see, this is one of the changes you're going to be seeing, Mayor, is right now you just have a list of uses per district. We're actually going through and creating a series of tables like this that identify not only what's permitted, uh, special use or not permitted, but also as it relates to the accessory uses and the structures, the same approach, the same thing with use definitions, so that, you know, as we're starting to define outdoor entertainment, you may start to go, well, what does that include? Well, if you go to four, five, B-five, it's giving you the definition, examples, and any additional thoughts or considerations that you need to have at that point. Right now, everything is kind of, you know, mushed around, is the technical term for tonight. Uh, but there again, this way staff has something, it's quick, easy, they can go to this one page and see, okay, is this permitted in this district? If not, why or what? Any other questions or thoughts on the accessory use and structures? If not, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Monet. Uh, she's going to take us through the ADU section, uh, and same thing, I know, Monet, you kind of, I don't think, can you see the council?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. So, if anybody has a question, just, just start talking and we'll be happy to answer those.
All right, thank you all for having us this afternoon. My name is Monet Moore, and I'm a tenant and associate. Tonight, I'm going to speak a little bit about accessory dwelling units. So, for the section, I just want to go over some of the proposed standards that we drafted and then also show some examples. So, before we get into it, let's talk a little bit about what accessory dwelling units are and the opportunities that they can provide for your community. So, an accessory dwelling unit is a dependent residential unit located on the same property as a single-family home. And so, um, as we're defining it for per our draft, they will be limited to single-family homes, but they also provide additional benefits to the community, um, diversifying the, uh, diversifying housing stock, increasing density, um, they can also provide single-family homeowners with a stream of income and they become rental property, and they allow people who already are senior citizens or depend on family members for care, they allow them to be able to live in place, um, and still be with them if they may. So, this is just an image of the different types of accessory dwelling units you may come across. Um, so, this is something that could be included detached, attached, interior upper level, which usually will be the transformation of the attic, um, interior lower level, which is usually the transformation of the basement, um, above garage, and then also those garage conversions. So, Ruth proposed a DDU standard. We just have similar to the table that we showed before, just some of the zoning districts, the zoning district that we're proposing, and then also the areas of the zoning district that accessory dwelling units would be allowed in. Also, this requires that the property owner shall occupy either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit. This also will be a limit of resale of the accessory dwelling unit, requiring that if the, um, property is sold, they should be sold at the same time and as they package with the principal structure, but they should not be split post-development. Additional standards include, uh, permitted accessory dwelling units shall comply with the local development standards for the principal dwelling unit in the zoning district in which accessory dwelling unit will be located. Um, so this also does not, accessory dwelling units do not include local homes or recreational vehicles or travel trailers. There should only be one accessory dwelling unit per lot, um, and the principal use again being single-family detached. Additionally, no detached accessory dwelling units shall exceed thirty-three percent of the size of the built, habitable floor area of the principal dwelling unit or seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, whichever is less. This is, um, Kelly touched on a little bit earlier in regards to how do we want to limit that size if there is a limit, so that one was just something that we're still open to discussing and exploring those options. Additionally, we touch on height and architectural style. So, currently we have it that the architectural style much match should be principal dwelling unit, um, or at least for a portion of the facade that are visible from the public right of way. We also get into off-street parking in those parking compartments for accessory dwelling units, to make sure that if people are, um, building accessory dwelling units, that they're not, um, creating parking problems or just congestion. So, at least one off-street parking space shall be provided for the accessory dwelling unit, and then tandem parking or shelter grass services are permitted. And then lastly, the accessory dwelling units shall not count to more than applicable maximum residential density requirements for those zoning districts.
Let me ask a question real quick while we're on that one, especially with respect to the density. Uh, because I know there's a couple of people that are kind of looking and going, okay or not okay. So, just curious, what, what's the general thought or other questions as it relates to the density component? And I can kind of go through some pros and cons with you if you need me to.
I'm wondering how arbitrary thirty-three percent is. I, I can, I can see where there would certainly be exception to that, but I also understand this argument that more than the size of the principal unit is not acceptable, kind of thing.
And that was one of the discussions that we had earlier with staff was, you know, a lot of places are saying a third, some places say a half, some places say as long as it's one square foot less than the principal house that you're in. So, there again, becomes a preference by the city. Uh, of course, you keep in, have to keep in mind, especially when you start looking closer to downtown, the, and, and we will need to be putting, we will be, need to be putting in, that's, that's pretty good. Um, we will be putting in standards as it relates to ground coverage, so that, you know, we, we talk about, you know, the stormwater drainage and making sure we're not encroaching in those areas, uh, but you, because you don't want to have a residential lot that's covered by a house and a separate structure with no green space, no nothing at that point. So, a lot of times, you know, places will limit it for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one, because it truly is accessory at that point, otherwise, you know, you could start to classify that as a duplex if you're not careful.
Yeah, and, and, and thinking through it, I, I mean, I was just trying to get a visual of seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, but a, a two-car garage wouldn't be that much. I mean, a twenty by thirty is only six hundred, so that's, you're getting into a pretty sizable footprint at that point, aren't you?
Correct. And there again, there is no hard and fast rule, it is purely a preference at this point. And, and let me judge, uh, say one thing is with respect to the density. One of the reasons we approach it that way is kind of twofold. One, you could have, start to arbitrarily manipulate, uh, density within an area if you start counting these units. Generally, what you start to see is that these units, uh, at this size or smaller, are generating less from water and wastewater. They're generating less, uh, impacts to, you know, the city as a whole. Uh, they are, you know, usually not going to have certain things. Uh, and the other thing is, is just affordability. You know, if you start, start regulating density based off of this, and that becomes a two-unit, um, it almost gets defined as a multifamily structure at that point, the whole idea was, you know, let's, let's start helping apply that to the missing middle housing.
So, are there minimal standards then for, other than size, for what constitutes an accessory dwelling in regards to bathrooms, kitchens, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir. Um, out of the building code, the standard, um, existing building code, you've got minimum square footages for living space, bedroom space on the occupant load, and, um, a minimum kitchen of seventy square feet.
Well, I mean, does it define by standard that it has to have a commode sink and a bathtub or not? Or, does the kitchen have to have a stove or kitchen have a sink and a stove or?
Cabinets to store.
Okay, okay, all right.
And, and Mayor, I've just kind of, uh, expand on that. That is one of the things that Ashley and Brandon, we were talking about earlier, we, we need to be careful that we don't create a standard that causes it to be so small that we can't meet that standard. So, we're kind of looking at it and some fine-tuning on that, but there again, the biggest thing was just, are you comfortable with limiting? If so, what's kind of that general thought process tonight?
So, like, I guess the average home is what, about fifteen-hundred square feet in the city? Something around there? So, thirty-three percent of that, is that, what, what would that be? Just a quick math, I mean.
Five hundred.
Now, this would apply to all the city, right? These, this, this level?
Unless we started, you know, without getting into that rural residential in those areas, which would be a little different, but yes, sir.
I, I still think that, I don't, anytime we start squirrel-hauling ourselves, uh, with like a thirty-three percent, I just think it needs to, it needs to fit where it's going.
And we've got a couple of examples that Monet is going to, and I'm sorry, Monet, I jumped in and interrupted you. Uh, we've got a couple of examples that she's going to show how, what the, what some of the look and feel of, of some of these units are, and we did start to look at what is the size. Uh, of course, one of them you'll look at is like, that actually works from a coverage standpoint. So, Monet, go ahead and pick it back up.
Thank you, Kelly. So, we're here, we just, um, we're showing the few accessory dwelling units, um, of different types attached and detached, and we also have another one that's aerial, but you'll just see that some of them are relatively small, but also just, you can also see how they are balancing those architectural features, or even just, um, similar in nature to the primary structure and the principal structure.
So, yeah, look at that one image on the bottom left, and that's one of those, which is the, and you can barely see the property line, but, you know, which one of those is the accessory and which was the principal?
I'm going to say the principal's got the oldest roof on it. That's it.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Mayor. Um, I actually know this piece of property, it's in Zephyr Hills.
So, so take lower right, got similar size and scale in both of those, but what if you've got the garage below it with the apartment above with a one-story house on the, on the same lot there?
And, and that is a consideration that we need to hear from you all, if you're, if you're okay or comfortable with that. Uh, if it is that, like Monet was saying, that, uh, renovation above the garage, I mean, if you're okay with it being, you know, based off of the maximum height of the zoning district, that's one thing. If you're like, no, it needs to be the exact same heights as this, then, you know, that's another consideration we need to think about.
And I know we've got examples of that, both in old structures and new, several new in the downtown area, where.
We have a go to the next one.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Monet. There we go.
So, again, we just have some accessory dwelling units displayed here, um, some that is more familiar.
Yeah, so the example, um, to the left and then the bottom is the aerial and then the, um, kind of street view. Um, and then the one in the top right is a DRD that you guys saw about a year ago. Um, it was an existing garage that wanted to convert to an ADU, um, and it was in an RM1 district. Again, um, just trying to give you some local examples to give you a better feel. Um, I mean, I think staff would probably prefer the one on the bottom, that at least that front, um, wall would have been more brick to match the primary structure, um, but that's something we kind of wanted you to see an example of, see what you think, um, get your feedback, so.
So, the bottom one, the accessory building, you don't think looks good enough, is that what you're saying?
I just think staff would prefer that it, that it did match the primary structure more, so we would probably recommend that it have more brick than it does, um, but we're wanting your feedback. Do you, do you, are you guys okay with that, you know?
That's actually a perfect example of one that.
Like, it looks nice, it does. It, it's a beautiful structure. Um, it doesn't quite match, so are you good with siding as long as it's, you know, again, it looks nice and new, or would you prefer that it have, um, more of the primary structure material? And we don't have the answer, we.
No, I, here again, I think it works.
Yeah, I'm not sure how easy it would be to find that brick, to be honest with you.
And then, in, in my opinion, the, the accessory structure could be much bigger along with, uh, would be acceptable along with the one up at the top right. And then if you look in the, um, in the bottom, uh, right corner of the photograph, you see in the back, there's, uh, another accessory structure that was on, on another, uh, like Green, Green Street.
Yeah, similar size.
Yes, and, and it's, uh, you know, it, it's large and, and they, they all go.
Okay. So, I mean, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that maybe thirty-three percent is too small, that you would be okay with it being larger.
In my opinion. I wouldn't want to confine it to thirty-three.
Yeah, I don't want to confine it, I think.
I think the other thing we got to really be careful about for your sake and ours is, without some sort of illustration or defining character that we get into what looks appropriate, what doesn't, or what looks good and what doesn't, because.
Yeah, we can't.
I've got seven different answers about what looks good and what doesn't.
Yeah, we, and we can't really regulate, um, total styles and materials unless it is sort of like, a third of the facade needs to have the same building material as the primary structure or something. We couldn't say, no vinyl. You know what I mean? Like, there's ways that we can kind of have higher-quality building materials for portions, but, um, we can't just straight up, unless it's in an overlay or a district, um, define like craftsmen or, or exclude vinyl or something like that, so.
Or legislate good taste.
It is, it is. We're trying really hard, but, um, so that's good feedback. I, it does, it does sound like, um, some of the standards we have so far are a little more conservative than maybe you're okay with, but, um, just on that note, um, you know, ADUs, we have a few in the city, but are you guys, it sounds like you're comfortable moving forward with them in certain areas, but I just want to kind of confirm, since I have you all here, is that a direction you're comfortable with going?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the, the basic issue of the accessory dwellings, I think, there's consensus around that. There's a whole nother issue that we've got to deal as a council is how, how they're used, and I think there's probably going to be debate on that, but I don't think we've got any real issues with the accessory dwelling units, because there are appropriate uses for them.
Great. I'll turn it back to you.
And I think that's, and Monet, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the last slide we have. So, I guess, yeah, at this point, I just wanted to definitely be respectful of your time, because I know you've got an agenda coming up in about six minutes. Uh, just using this last minute or two before, uh, your formal meeting, are there any additional thoughts or considerations or things for us to can, to think about and take home with us as, as it relates to the two topics we've had tonight?
I think we're headed in the right direction, yeah. Uh, you know, I think if we'd have gotten to this point and we had serious questions among us about whether or not we wanted to even allow them, I think that'd be a whole different ballgame, but I think from the comments tonight and the questions tonight we've asked retained that we're, we're at least moving in the right direction and we're at the moment now of fine-tuning rather than debating.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think some divisions that have covenant and name restrictions would override, we've got a scrap.
We, we had that exact discussion earlier today, uh, you know, what about the newer neighborhoods? Most. Most of those are going to have specific HOA or CC, I mean, some sort of regulation saying thou shall not, which is great, that's fine. So, you know, we're not necessarily targeting those areas per se, but, you know, it's something that could be incorporated into one of those projects as part of something at that point. Yes, ma'am.
One thing I'm not sure we got was just some feedback on, so not accessory dwelling units, it seems like we're pretty, we have some pretty good direction there, but accessory structures, so like a garage or a detached carport or a shed, something of that nature does counsel. Right now, the standard is that it can be the height of the district, which most residential districts are thirty-five feet. Are you comfortable with that, or would you prefer that we limit the height of the accessory structure to no taller than the primary structure? Or do you have strong feelings or? So that would mean, I mean, ADUs, right now, the, it says kind of the opposite, it does say that you can't have it taller than the house. So if you had a one-story house, you could not have a garage within an apartment on top because it's one story, but if you had a two-story house, you could then match. So I just kind of wanted to get a feel for that, if you have strong feelings.
I would have a question about that, because I know we've got a lot of one-story houses with accessory dwellings that are above the garage in the downtown area.
And are you, are you guys okay with that?
And it's not unappropriate in that particular setting.
Okay.
I don't, just from a starting point, that would be my feeling.
Okay. So it sounds like maybe then that height of the district would be more important to you all than necessarily the primary structure? Is that, okay, awesome, thank you. And sorry, I feel like I maybe cut off Mr. Booker, were you about to ask a question?
I'm just taking it all in. Thirty-five feet is what, three and a half stories? Something like that?
Yeah, it's probably three-ish, yeah. For residential, so. We don't have a lot that meet that standard, although current residential does not have height limits, so that's one problem that we are hoping to rectify with this UDO.
Okay, Mayor, Council, there again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. You're going to be seeing more and more of us as we are rolling components of this out. As always, if there are specific items that you want us to consider, please work through Ashley and Brandon, and they can help kind of facilitate the discussion as we're moving forward. But with that, there again, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, look forward to being back here sooner rather than later. And if there's nothing else, like I said, we will just say have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, that ends the workshop. We are almost at the, at the half hour. We'll take a five, ten-minute break and then we'll go into our regular session. Let me call the meeting to order. We thank you for giving us a little bit of a break there between a workshop and our regularly scheduled meeting. This is a regularly scheduled called meeting convened this evening, January 25th of 2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Booker if he would to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Father, we thank you, God, for allowing us to come here today as a council body to represent the citizens of Greer. Father, give us the inspiration and the knowledge to represent Greer as bestly as possible and to make the decisions to bestly affect the citizens, and continue to bless our county, continue to bless our state, continue to bless the city, and we ask it in your name, Jesus.
Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public form this evening?
No, sir.
With that, we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting. You've got in your packet this evening, the minutes from the January 11th, 2022, meeting I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. Council, you've got the departmental reports contained in your packet this evening. As always, Administrator will be glad to give you more information as well as department heads. Susan Howell joins us this evening to give us an overview of our financial activity.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the financial summary as of December 31st, 2021. Beginning with the general fund, three point five million dollars was collected in revenue for a year-to-date total of just a little over eight million dollars. Total expenditures for the month were two point five million, and there was no fund balance usage for projects this month, so we have a year-to-date total expenditures of fifteen point four million, which is two percent under budget. The cash balance in the general fund is nine million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Moving on to the hospitality fund, we have year-to-date revenue of one million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, expenditures of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, with a cash balance of two million, twenty-four thousand dollars. And the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is one hundred and fourteen thousand, the expenditures are six hundred and thirty-one thousand, and the cash balance in the account is two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Floor is open, Council. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayorman, the floor is yours, sir.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, and uh, thank you for being here, and thank you for sitting through the workshop this evening. Just by way of reminder, we've got a number of issues that are going to take workshop-type settings to kind of go through in the amount of detail that's warranted. And so by way of reminder, at the next council meeting, we are going to have a workshop beforehand where we'll discuss updates to the traffic calming policy, as well as some initiatives towards street preservation and some work that we've, we're going to continue, we're going to integrate into our street maintenance program. And then after the regularly scheduled meeting is where we will have presentations from fire, police, and courts. This is that year-in-review budget meeting and the budget initiatives meeting that we're going to have an opportunity for those department heads to speak to you in advance of the workshop that we have scheduled for the end of February. A reminder that the ethics certification that's due annually is due on the 30th of March, so kind of keep that on your calendar. Again, it's an online process, and that process is a little bit different than it has been in the past. It's not harder, it's just different. So please make sure that you get that taken care of. Again, I'll continue to remind you up to that point, and I imagine at some point Tammy will hit you with something if we get too, too close to the end and we don't have everybody signed up. Again, redistricting is a discussion that we will be having and continue to have. That will really kick off with a presentation by the state here on the meeting on March the 8th, so keep that on your calendars. Your W2s for the year are in your mailboxes if you've not gone by and picked those up. And just, just an update, obviously, we went through a significant winter storm event. If you weren't here, you missed it. But a significant winter storm event, Winter Storm Izzy. And just to kind of give you some, a frame of reference on the impact that that had, we had, and this is just a public services snapshot, and I can provide other data if you need it, but we had, we had eighteen public services employees work in the storm event, which amounted to eleven hundred and fifteen man-hours for that entire event. And we expended between overtime and then materials just north of thirty-nine thousand dollars in road pretreatment, in all the things that go into keeping our roads scraped, cleaned, and I can't say enough about our staff. They were on top of it, they began those first blades hit at three in the morning on Sunday and worked till about two that afternoon, just continually pushing snow. And just one of the things that I wanted Council to hear, and really for anybody in the public that may be interested, is as rare as these storm events are, they do happen and they impact us. So what we've done as a staff is we kind of did a little after-action analysis of the event and tried to find some places where we know we could do a little bit better. And I think one place we could do a little bit better, and we will work on in advance, is the, the public communication part of it. I think there's an expectation that, especially on an event like this, that we are in neighborhoods scraping streets and doing those things. Well, with, you know, we are still in South Carolina, so the amount of plows that we have running are limited, so we continue to work those main thoroughfares to ensure that hospitals are accessible, that public safety can move about as they can. And then as those get cleared, we will go into neighborhoods and secondary streets. But it's just a matter of make sure we maintain a good communication avenue so our residents and businesses know what we're doing and when. So that's going to be one of the things that we continue to clarify. The last thing that I wanted to say, and it's weird that the Administrator's report's actually longer than the agenda, but next Tuesday is Hometown Legislative Action Day. So just by way of reminder, if you have signed up, fantastic. If you haven't, it's not too late, we can get you down to Columbia to interact with our legislators and then with the Municipal Association. They've got a number of programs throughout the day that are fantastic and germane to y'all's role as council members. Unless there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, Council, that is all that I have.
Council, a question. I know in the past, when it came to the Brian solution and maybe some sand, that DOT provided that for us as long as we, as long as we picked it up, is that?
Yes, sir, that, that did happen. It was funny, one of the, and I can't say enough about DOT's willingness to help, because we, you know, we were working city, Star County roads, and we were working state roads, it's just the way it is. And in light of that, SC DOT does partner with us and provide us the material, we put it down. It was funny, though, we, when we talked about it with, with Mr. Durham, our Public Services Director, you know, we were putting the pretreatment down, we were putting the sand down, and for some reason, this was just some magic snow and ice, and it just had a different effect on, on the roads, it just made it much more of a challenge. But all that notwithstanding, you know, our guys really did a great job, proud of SC DOT and that relationship. So again, we'll learn from it and we'll do better next time.
I know our citizens, and I had a conversation with them, they have come to expect Greer, we're the gold standard when it comes for keeping our roads up. That's just what we've done in the past, people have come to expect, which is fine because we have the resources to do it.
The amount of ice that came down at a specific time made it pretty difficult to scrape at times.
It did, and, you know, people traveled on it, packed it down, and we have six plows. I mean, we have six plows running. So not a huge public investment to enhance our snow and plow patrol for, you know, that one-off chance every five years we get a, we get hammered like this.
Well, there's like a chemical formula with all that Brian stuff, that it can't work against you if you don't get the right temperatures and the right type of precipitation at the right time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Council, move to old business. One item before us this evening in regards to old business is the second and final reading of ordinance number one dash 2020, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the city of Greer. Mr. Mayorman, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir, no new or additional information.
I'll announce a motion to receive ordinance number one dash 2022. So move. Second, second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes. Council, we have no stated items for executive session. We're adjourned.